Good evening, everyone. We're back in session for the June 20, 2018, meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. We will now have general public comments. Anyone wishing to make a comment, three minutes, please approach the podium. We'll put an end to general public comments. Minutes of June 6, 2018, regular Town Council meeting. May I have a motion?
Move, approve.
Second.
Any adjustments or amendments? Seen none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda? None at this time. Items to be signed, treasurer's warrants are to be signed, which I will do at the conclusion of the meeting. Order 18-41, 7:00 p.m., public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 601, the traffic ordinance, Section 25A1, to eliminate year-round parking along a portion of Black Point Road. And I would ask Sergeant O'Malley to present this for us.
I would say that first, this issue was called to our attention via the proprietor of the State Park. If you would...
Keep talking.
Okay. And essentially, it's not a huge impact by measurement. It's five parking spaces. It was called to our attention by Greg Wilford, who manages the State Park, that it was a safety issue for his patrons coming and going across the crosswalk that is there to the overflow parking. He asked originally for quite an extensive no-parking area, and we whittled it down to just line of sight. The reason we looked at it is 50 feet to the right out the entrance, and 50 feet to the left out the exit, which is essentially the minimum length of a parking space is 20 to 25 feet. We went two-car lengths either way. Towards the southernmost entrance, facing Prouds, there's a crosswalk there, so we lost one parking spot, because you can't park in a crosswalk anyway. And the other one, we'd lose two parking spots. It's essentially just for that reason, for the safety issue of his patrons' visibility, line of sight for cars leaving, cars pulling in, and for pedestrians crossing to the overflow parking area.
Thank you. Questions from the Town Council? Councilor Katerina?
Sergeant O'Malley, I know you and I have talked about this. And I know that the police have posted temporarily that there's no parking there, pursuant to us looking at this as an issue. Have you heard any complaints from anyone regarding it being posted, or had issues with people parking where you guys have posted it?
Ironically, it had always been posted in error, that there was no parking, and it was a tow-away zone down there. And when we realized that it was posted, there were some parking ticket issues, parking tickets issued, and those generated some complaints.
But since then, since you guys went down and did some...
Since we did an emergency posting, we haven't had any complaints.
Okay, thank you.
To my knowledge.
When was it that you posted?
That would have been this spring. We took down the inappropriate signs and then reposted appropriate signs. And that was... Give me two seconds. I think it was probably March.
March, March, April. And then you get to May 15, and there's no parking there, period?
Anywhere.
Anywhere, or any...
No, that actually, in 1994, we exempted that portion of... Yes, so May, no parking, May 1 to September 1 in that portion. That was exempted from the no parking at all back in 1994.
That was exempted?
So there is no parking from May 1 to September 1. In that particular area. Every place else, there is no parking at all.
Okay. Counselor Earl?
Yeah, we had a conversation at First Read, I believe, about whether the intent was for both sides of the streets, or just the side that the parking lot is. Do you have an opinion on which was appropriate?
I think between Director Scharr and I from Public Works, we felt that it was, for the purpose stated, it was just that one side that was appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-up questions. I know, when we talked about this earlier, I have not received a single email from any constituent about a safety issue, a concern about safety. Two, I understand there was a request made by a individual. But, and thirdly, really kind of a follow-up to Counselor Katerina's question. I know recently, the police have posted on their Facebook page for citizens to say where they think the most dangerous areas are, where there's safety issues in Scarborough. Now, I've read a lot of those, and a lot of them are the major intersections here. There's lots of conversations about excess speed in a lot of places. Did anybody mention this, the parking down there in those spots, as being an issue? Did it float up to being... Did anybody make any comment about a safety issue, or a concern about safety at Scarborough Beach?
I'm afraid I don't have an answer to that, Counselor Hayes. I'm not privy to that information as it comes in, unless it comes across directed at me. So I don't have...
Is that something we could get though?
I'm certain if it exists, I can find it.
Because, I mean, it was pretty, it was really well done. So, anybody, you know, let us know where you are concerned in Scarborough about safety issues. And I'd be concerned. And then the third request would be to Counselor Katerina, I think, when we, at First Read, you said you had gotten several or numerous emails.
Right.
And I made a request, you kind of share them with the rest of us, so we can see them. I haven't seen them, so I...
I thought you said you were concerned that I hadn't shared them at the time, so...
Well, no, I just, you know, for us to be, I'd just like to, whatever you got, share them with us. So, I haven't seen anything. And actually, I've gotten emails from a dozen or so, half a dozen or so, saying they are concerned about additional restrictions, so...
Yeah, and the emails that I received in review, and I'll dig them out, had to do as much with the ticketing that was going on because of the posting and confusion about whether it wasn't there. And I know there have been questions about it in the past, and that's why I asked if the police and Public Works would go down and say, is this something that should be addressed? So, this is why we're here where we're at. And frankly, you know, in my opinion, you know, taking away a couple of parking spots right there along the road, to me, is... I would support it, but there you go.
Yeah, just a follow-up question. How would you enforce this? I know some of the ordinances we've passed, and the parking ordinances have created some issues for us for enforcement. Is it... How would you envision enforcing?
It's a sign.
It would be on an as-needed basis, and through the course of normal patrol.
I think probably driving that roadway, Peter Nappi is in that vehicle, police vehicle, and patrolling all the time, so...
They're paid for by Prouds, right? Is that who you're referring to? Would he patrol this?
He absolutely patrols that section. Because the 25 mile an hour speed limit that is so important to that neighborhood starts before you get to the bend in the road where the art building is. It's before you get to the entrance to the State Park by a few hundred feet. Chris?
So Sergeant O'Malley, just for my clarification, I heard you say that the one individual who we got the complaint from is actually the manager of the facility, correct? So it's not a... Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a local resident who happens to be living nearby that is not comfortable with that. It's the actual person in charge of that facility. Is that fair?
To clarify, he's the one that asked for it?
Yes.
Yeah, he was, yes.
But his position is manager of that facility. He's not a citizen who lives nearby who's...
Not sure where he lives, but he does, he is the manager of that facility.
And he made that request in that position as...
Correct.
Okay. I think one of the things we struggle with is this, you know, maybe to Counselor Hayes's point, it seems like it's new to us, but we're not privy to all of the input that you all get from public safety. Is it, would you say that this is a relatively new occurrence, or this is something that's been happening over time, and it's gotten to the point where now we're in a situation where it needs to be addressed?
In my opinion, the patronage of that park has been growing substantially year by year. And we are in a position where daily, we have traffic issues in that particular area on a nice sunny day where we back up into the roadway. So, anything we can do to make it safer in that particular area before we have a tragedy may be to our benefit.
Good. Thank you.
Are there standards for setbacks from public commercial business driveways?
No.
So, I mean, it makes sense, it seems to me, to have some setback. I just didn't know if Scarborough has any.
We have setbacks from fire hydrants, we have setbacks from intersections, but we don't have an ordinance setback from a private driveway.
Okay.
So, summertime, I definitely see, as you've said, increased traffic use and increase in potential for accidents. So, I'm curious, if we've had some major incidents down there, and then would you, do you have the same opinion of the winter months?
I'm not aware of any near misses, if you will, in the winter months. And I know that is a frequenting place for some winter surfers. And I think that's why we try to limit it to such a small portion, essentially five parking spots, that seem to fall within an acceptable range.
That's okay.
I just want to comment on the standard setback piece. I believe from the Transportation Committee, we're typically looking at line of sight as a mechanism. Is that a fair mechanism to say, when you're looking from a safety perspective, it's not a set distance, it's sitting, you have to actually be physically at the intersection, look at what line of sights look like, what the, you know, and assume the safe distance is based on the actual setting. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you say that, we're talking about 50 feet on each side of the entrance and the exit. Is there any distance shorter than 50 feet, or is that the minimum that you consider necessary to achieve the goal here of significantly improved line of sight?
I think we could drop back a few feet, but I think we aren't gaining much. We need 25 feet at a minimum to put in a parking spot. So, if we halved it by that, then we, that's the only way we would gain anything. And in fact, on the southernmost driveway, there's a crosswalk there, so we have to start beyond that anyway. So, we wouldn't gain anything of appreciable amount there. On the northern side, we would still have one parking spot there.
Other questions of Sergeant O'Malley? Great. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thanks, sir.
This is the public hearing. We have gone through First Reading. We will have a subsequent hearing for Second Reading. So, I am now going to open up the proceeding to conduct the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Town Council on this matter, please approach the podium.
Yes, Larry Brunz, 39 Hanson Road. And I have a question. I'm confused as to when you can actually park in this area. Can you park there in the summertime? Can you park there in the wintertime? I thought I heard him say that that road is closed all the rest of the time, parking on both sides of the road. When can you park on that road, and where on that road can you park?
I think both sides of Black Point Road have a restriction that says no parking from May...
To September.
15th to September 15th or 1st. I'm not sure which.
Okay, so you can park there in the wintertime?
But, yes, you can. So that from September through until mid-May, I know it's May 15, you can park there.
And there's a certain number of spaces right in front of the park now that are exempted from that ordinance?
And there's no, there are no spaces marked. It's just like most of our streets. You can pull off onto the gravel portion of the edge of the roadway, which is what people do at the present time.
But it's only a certain section. It's not, doesn't go on forever. There's like 300 feet one side of the park, or 300 feet the other side of the park, or?
It's, there's an extensive straightaway heading away from Prouds Neck. And so, there'd be a relatively unlimited amount of parking opportunity.
If I, if I may...
You want to try to answer the question?
Mr. Brunz, what they're looking for is just, there's, the Scarborough Beach has an entrance there.
I understand what they want.
And it's used year-round. And all we would be doing is saying no parking for a couple of more car lengths beyond that in the wintertime. Otherwise, there's no parking there anyway. In summer, there's no parking on the road there.
And what I'm saying is, you're saying there is parking there in the summertime, except for the...
No.
Except for the...
No.
So you cannot park there at all in the summertime?
That's correct.
Correct. It's only the off-season when you can park there.
Okay.
So that's what this would be applicable to, because in-season parking's already banned in total throughout that entire stretch, so...
That explains that, okay. Some things that I hope, first of all, was this brought forth by the ordinance committee, or was this brought forth by the gentleman who owns the property, straight to the Town Council?
Came through ordinance.
Okay. Some things that I have thought of, basically, I really hate giving up a right that I already have, and just having that terminated, and all of a sudden, it becomes a privilege, which I really don't care for. Does the town have the ability to actually widen the road there, and put in official parking spaces, so that people don't have to... And I'm talking about off-season now, because in the wintertime, it can be a bit of a trick getting past those cars.
I don't think that's been entertained.
Okay. Just a seed of thought. The other possibilities, the Sanitary District owns land across the street. And is there any reason that we couldn't put a parking lot over there to facilitate parking, or additional parking at Scarborough Beach in the summertime?
Again, I don't, I don't think, it's good that you make a suggestion, because we certainly could consider it. The...
You're taking privilege away from me?
Yeah.
I'd like something in return.
Right. The Sanitary District property has a roadway that leads to their property, which is to the rear
Yeah.
of the frontage on Black Point Road.
Yeah.
So, the frontage on Black Point Road, I think, is pretty much occupied by residential homeowners.
Yeah. If you believe the GIS maps that the town has of that area, we have an open space of 30 feet wide on either side of the road leading to the Sanitary District. That's it, that's accurate. But beyond the first house lot that's there, there's an area and bank of that that would facilitate approximately 100 cars of parking. Another option would be, is the land that affords the Sanitary District on the Route 1 side of Black Point Road, if you want to call it that, or would that be Northerly Side, is owned by the Sprague Corporation.
Yeah, I think there is auxiliary parking on the side away from the entrance at the present time.
Just giving you more options, but these are, these are options that we don't have right now. The auxiliary parking, it says in the park rules that parking in the main lot is not available in the winter months. It's only available during on-season months. That would say to me, the parking in the auxiliary parking lot may be available. And has that ever been explored as an opportunity for Scarborough residents to be able to park there, and allow us to enjoy that beach without endangering our lives on this slippery road?
We don't, I don't think the Town Council's aware of whether that's true or not.
Okay. That's, thank you very much for your time, and...
Thank you for your questions.
Appreciate some follow-up.
Hi, my name's Marvin Gates. My wife and I, Debbie, live at 423 Black Point Road, which is across the street from the Scarborough Beach State Park. We are in that building that I think, Mr. Donovan, you mentioned, the art building, residential building. I walk our dog at the State Park just about every day of the winter. And I've had one instance that I wanted to bring up, where the parking literally blocked the entrance to the State Park. You can get by a car, and you can get in there. Nothing terribly dramatic, but it, that sort of thing really shouldn't happen, so. And I paced it off this morning, the 50 feet. It's not that much. Our concern would be if you lengthened the amount of space where you couldn't park, we would be concerned that it would inch, the parking would inch its way down towards Prouds Neck. We're right before the turn there. And that's not a dangerous corner, but if there's parking on that corner, people come around from Prouds Neck and don't really see the parking going on. It's a little bit of a blind corner. But the 50 feet that the officer described seemed fine to us. And appreciate your attention to it. I would be in favor of it. We would be in favor of it. But no more than the 50 feet, if that would be possible. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, just a little unprecedented here?
Yes, you have.
Mr. Gates, may I ask you a question, if you don't mind?
Sure, of course.
Being, the location is, strikes me as a very good opportunity to ask you, in the winter months, what, do you see a lot of parking there? Is it, how would you describe the number of cars that are typically there?
On a cloudy, cold winter day, I would say the chances are very close to being something like zero. On a beautiful, sunny winter day, I would say maybe it could stretch up to a dozen.
Okay.
You're not talking about more than that. I can't remember more than that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for opening Harmon's Market. Very nice gallery. Chief Bolton?
I just wanted to clarify that the real issue here is from about March or so until May 1. Because what happens is, is that the, when they have nice days, and they open the park before May 1, then there are cars that park in there. And that's where the real issue is with people using the park and coming out when cars are parked right close to the, close to the edge of the driveway.
Thank you. So, what the chief's saying is that it's only when the, the line of sight issue only arises when there are cars in the parking lot of the State Park.
Yeah. The only, the only thing that I would say to that is, the reason that we were looking to bring something year-round for those spots, is that we really didn't want to introduce something that has now a different date
Right.
than some of our other dates. It's already confusing for our folks as to when they can, when they can't, and so forth. So, just having an additional date of March 1, or whatever, it seemed like it was going to create an issue. That's why we're looking at year-round.
Chris? So, Chief, I know this is beyond your purview, but I guess maybe a question I would ask, and it kind of relates to Mr. Brunz's question before. Is there a way to ask the State Park, if they're going to open, to plow the auxiliary lot, or whatever it is, to give people the opportunity to park in this, or they're not parking on the street? Is that an approach we could possibly take, or is that beyond our jurisdiction, and we can't ask that or request that?
I have not had discussions. We certainly could explore that. I don't know, John, that type of conversation.
Okay.
It's an interesting idea, is to collaborate with the State Park, if we have plans of that.
I think part of the issue is, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Sergeant, but part of the issue is when they do open, they're charging. So, I'm not sure that they're going to want to allow cars to, other cars to park in there that aren't paying their fee.
Yeah, that's true. Counselor Bolton?
I just want to ask a clarifying question, because I think I'm getting confused. So, Mr. Wilford manages the State Park?
Yes.
Okay. So, he made the request. So, it would seem that if he started the conversation, maybe he would be the one to follow up with, you know, Counselor Kiasa's suggestion. I think that would be a win-win for everybody, to have a little bit more parking down there and get them off the street. Just a thought.
Worth exploring. Thank you, Chief. Others who would like to speak to this issue?
I mean, if it's a dozen cars.
Just a point of clarification right now. Thank you for allowing. The auxiliary parking lot is owned by a private landowner. So, I don't know why we couldn't enter into that agreement with a private landowner ourselves. I don't think we have to go to the park to do that. In the next observation I had, it sounds like part of the problem with line of sight in vehicles is when they're trying to use the auxiliary parking lot, turning traffic around, getting them out of their parking lot again, and over to the auxiliary lot. So perhaps there needs to be some management, traffic management considered by the Parks Department as well.
Thank you. Others?
Hi. My name's Ryan McDermott. I'm one of the owners of Black Point Surf Shop, 134 Black Point Road. And I just want, I surf every day I can at Scarborough Beach. I have been for 15 years now. And I just want to make sure that in the off-season, when the park is closed, that there will be ample parking for us to still access the beach there. That's really the most important thing to me. Just because there's not that many places you can go in the winter where you're away from everybody, and that's one that we have that we should keep. And if we, I'm just afraid if we extend the parking, I mean, 50 feet towards the Prouds Neck side seems a little long, because if you're coming out of Scarborough Beach, looking that way, you have the entire entering lane to look at. But, in my understanding, there's parking, unlimited parking on Black Point Road in either direction, if that's right. And if that is the case, then it shouldn't matter if it's 50 feet, or 20 feet, or whatever. I just want to make sure that that is the case, that there is, you know, parking for up to, you know, 40 cars. I know, on the right winter day, there could be up to 20 people down there, and it would just, you know, be too bad if we lost that.
Thank you. Others? Close the public hearing. Thank you. Order 1844, 7:00 p.m. public hearing in action on the new requests for food handler's license, special amusement license, and a liquor license from Generis for Siegler DBA 21 Taps LLC located at 185 U.S. Route 1. And I ask the town clerk to report on this.
This is a change in ownership. They have actually purchased where Dimitri's and Pizza Time have been located. We followed the requirements of the special amusement license and sent out notices to all the butters. We received nothing back. Assume this license would be issued, or the licenses would be issued, once they receive their occupancy permit from the court office.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. Accept the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? None? Seen none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. All Business, order 18-30, Second Reading on the Proposed Amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the town of Scarborough, Maine, Section Roman numeral 6, definitions in Section Roman numeral 17B, Hagus Parkway District, H.P., be permitted uses conventional and planned developments. And I think Mr. Chase, the planning director, will introduce this matter for us.
Sure, happy to do so. Thank you very much. As I presented this before you, twice before, I'll keep it pretty brief for those who haven't been privy to that. Just by way of background, as you noted, these are proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. Principally, it's around the issue of really bringing the Hagus Parkway District into alignment with the way we treat other businesses and other business districts around accessory storage of materials for things that are produced on-site. Currently, in the Hagus Parkway District, as I just said, there's a little more... Currently in the Hagus Parkway District, as I just said, there's a little more prescriptive terms, term regarding how much of that accessory storage of goods and materials can be maintained on a site. And so this provision would really, as I said, serve to clarify that by eliminating one of the stated permitted activities in the Hagus Parkway. But then we go on to make other refinements in the zoning ordinance around definitions, clarifications around distribution facilities and warehousing facilities that we think will bring things more in line with, with expectations. So happy to.
Questions for Mr. Chase? Thank you, Jay.
Could I just get a little bit of clarification? So we are removing the clause in permitted uses for the Hagus Parkway where we even talk about warehousing distribution at all. And therefore, it's not an allowed use because it's not mentioned unless it, you know, is an auxiliary use per what you said.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jay, we had, would you address the long-range planning committee's amendments? There were some minor amendments, as I recall, from first reading?
Sure, yep. And so, right, and I presented those at public hearing at, at the initial first reading. This item went, there were a number of questions by councilors, and those questions were really echoed when we did the planning board public hearing. So at that point, staff, I worked with Karen Martin Esseco, we asked council to pause for a moment, to basically skip a meeting for a second reading, so we could take it back to long-range planning committee to talk through those elements. And so that's where we made some further refinements to the definitions of distribution and warehousing. And those were presented in a memorandum that was dated June 1st and presented to council at public, at the public hearing on this item.
So procedurally, we need to have a motion to amend to add those before we address the main motion? Good. Thank you. Public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. See none? Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'll recognize Counselor Keterina for a motion to amend.
What am I amending? I'm sorry. Is it this highlighted stuff? Okay. Gosh, right. Be it hereby or game by the town council, the town of Scarborough, Maine, town council assembled the Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the town of Scarborough, Maine. Section 6 definitions is amended as follows. Distribution facility, a structure or building used, strike primarily for the receiving and shipping, strike receiving and storing, a finished, back to original, a finished goods and articles where goods are received, strike and/or stored for, and, and then add, and redirected for delivery to the ultimate customer at remote locations. Warehousing facility, strike and storage, a striker, excuse me, a structure building, yeah?
If you make reference to the materials that were provided in the agenda packet, I think that probably would suffice.
Oh, okay. So just say that.
For identification purposes.
To the extent that that satisfies council's interest in what the motion is.
Yes.
So.
I think that's satisfactory.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Counselor Roman. Discussion on the motion to amend. Counselor Keterina?
Having been on long-range planning, I know this has been thoroughly vetted and looked at and talked about and whatever, so I obviously would support this.
Other comments? See none? All in favor? Opposed? We now have a main motion as amended. Discussion, further discussion on it? See none? All in favor? Opposed? It is adopted. Thank you. A little awkward, but you made it. New business, order 18-45, first reading on the proposed Second Amendment to Contract Zone Roman numeral 3, Main Life Care Retirement Community, Inc., located at 5 Dorado Drive. And I would recognize Jim Adamovich and his crew of folks from Piper Shores to make a presentation to introduce this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Jim Adamovich. I'm CEO of Main Life Care Retirement Community, doing business with Piper Shores. We are here tonight to support our application to modify an existing contract zoning agreement in order to expand our 501(c)(3) continuing care retirement community on a close-by parcel. Joining me this evening to support our presentation before council is Will Conway of Sebago Technics. Will represents our civil engineering partner. Eric Dale in SK Advisors is our pre-construction development consultant. We also have President Ron Epstein, legal counsel from Jensen Barrett. And we have another, a number of members of the Piper Shores leadership team present this evening. Piper Shores would like to expand its current offerings by acquiring and constructing additional independent living housing on the nearby property of 5 Dorado Drive. Piper Shores' current property consists of 138 acres at 15 Piper Road. The community is effectively built out on this site as 96 of the 138 acres at the 15 Piper Road address are conserved. The organization has a waitlist of nearly 160 parties who would like to move to Piper Shores. That number constitutes an existing waitlist of a, wait period of approximately three to seven years. Piper Shores has entered into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the property at 5 Dorado Drive. That property is a 45-acre property that contains a single-family home and a detached barn. The property is within 150 feet of the front entrance to 15 Piper Road. We would like to share the following with council this evening for your consideration. We'd like to provide you with a brief overview of the proposed development. We'd like to share some of the key aspects of the proposed contract zone amendment that we're putting forward for your consideration. We'd also like to briefly share with you some feedback from a recent meeting with property owners that abut the 5 Dorado Drive property. And also share with you briefly, from our perspective, a number of community benefits that we believe that this project will entail. We appreciate the opportunity to present our plans before council this evening, and I would like to ask Will Conway of Sebago Technics to lead us through the development initiative. Will?
See if we can get the technology in order here to cooperate. Thank you, members of the council. I'm Will Conway. I'm a landscape architect with Sebago Technics. And what I'm going to show you tonight is what I think is one of the most exciting projects that our firm has been associated with. The proposed plan that you'll see more is composed of three housing types, and I'm going to introduce some new terms to you this evening. There's 16 single-family cottages, 16 residences in a pocket neighborhood, and I'll explain a pocket neighborhood to you a little bit further along in the discussion. And then 24 to 28 units in a hybrid apartment building that also has a clubhouse that will serve this site as well as complement the existing Piper Shores community. This aerial photograph here shows the existing Piper Shores campus. My cursor's really not showing up very well. And anyway, this is Spurwink Road here, and this is the Dorado property here. There's about 150 feet distance on Spurwink between the two properties. This is an aerial photograph of the site, and Spurwink Road is on the left here.
Well, I think your pointer will only work on the screen, not on the.
Oh, okay. Great. Oh, this is much better. Thank you. Again, the photo's kind of dark, but, so this is Spurwink Road, and the property kind of doglegs like this. And you'll see in other diagrams, right here is a ridge line that's about 25 feet taller than Spurwink Road. So this area of the site is not visible from the public right of way. And it is spectacular. The landowner maintains this as a mode area, and you'll see that we retain that as a central element of the site plan. This is an existing conditions plan of the property. It shows sort of areas that are wooded. This is the, Jim mentioned the existing single-family home, which is located here. This is the driveway that comes in, crests the hill here, drops down, and then climbs back up to the residence here. So this is open area, and then these are more wooded sites on the property. Sebago's wetland scientists have been on the site and mapped the wetlands. They're predominantly sort of in this area of the site. There's a little bit here and a little bit here, but there's a large wetland complex right there. And Jim and I have met with the Maine DEP with our preliminary development plan, and they've encouraged us, and it's certainly Piper's mission to be good stewards of the environment and minimize the wetland impacts associated with the project. This is the exciting part. This is the development plan that we're proposing. And under the current zoning regulations, the front setbacks for buildings are 50 feet, and the side and rear setbacks are 15 feet. And one of the community benefits is we're proposing substantial increases to those. On the Spurwink frontage, we're proposing a 200-foot setback. And then on the sides of the property, we're proposing a 50-foot, either undisturbed buffer or a vegetative buffer. I mentioned this beautiful area here, in the center, the existing mode area. That's going to be retained. And in it, at the low point, will be a stormwater pond with a permanent water pool elevation. And then the three neighborhoods are sort of clustered around this open space. This is the pocket neighborhood here. This is the hybrid apartments here, and then the cottages are here. One of the elements of the plan that's very important is the series of trails that are back in this area they connect to and go on to the Camp Ketchup property and also to the Scarborough Land Trust, which is sort of a little bit off the screen. Our plan is to preserve those trails and to provide public access to them. So any resident of Scarborough could drive into the access road to a small trailhead in this location and then access those trails. This is the pocket neighborhood. And what a pocket neighborhood is, is it's a neighborhood that turns the traditional development pattern inside out. And so what that means, all of the access to the project, to the buildings, occurs on the perimeter. These would be access to garages. These units would come in here to the garages. So the front doors of these buildings are here, 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 and here, 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 and here. And they all open onto a common green space. So it encourages social interaction, and it's a very unique housing style. There's nothing like this in Maine today, and we think it's really a great plan. These two pockets are contiguous with the grand open space that I presented earlier that has the pond in it. So it's really kind of a, a very walkable, outdoor-oriented kind of environment. These are the cottage units, and similar to those, the accesses on the perimeter. Again, the front doors would be in this zone and in this zone, encouraging, again, interaction between the residents. I mentioned the trailhead for public access that would occur here, and it would be adjacent to, we're envisioning, envisioning a modern, a modest, excuse me, maintenance barn that would provide maintenance for the entire site. And lastly is the proposed hybrid building. Thank you. So the, as I mentioned, there's a central feature of clubhouse. This is not completely thought out yet, but it would be a, like a pub or a bistro kind of thing, probably would serve lunch and dinner, would have fitness rooms on a different level. And then there would be two units, two wings of units on either side. And this would be a three-story building that would be, have parking under it. So you would drive here under the building, and then you could take an elevator up to it. And then this area here would be for people that don't live in this complex that want to come and take advantage of this amenity. That amenity would have served this property as well as people in the current Piper Shores campus could come over and enjoy a meal in this location. This is a view that, it's a little bit tough to read, but it's, this is Spurwink Road here. This is the hybrid apartment building here. And there's a view line that, again, I mentioned that crest 25 feet above the elevation. And your view from here would go over the roof of that building, so that building would not be visible from Spurwink. And this is a, the arrows will show you a viewpoint coming up the access road. You would see a little bit of the roof lines of the, the pocket neighborhood, and just barely a glimpse of the very top of the roof of the hybrid building. Jim in his opening asked me to explain sort of what the elements of the Second Amendment are, and I'll just go through those. So it's to basically use the existing contract zone and amend it. One of the amendments is to allow a maximum building height of 55 feet, which is for that one hybrid building. Basically, a level of parking and then three levels above it with pitched roofs. I met with Jay Chase and the code enforcement officer in terms of how you measure that building. And so we derived a height of 55 feet for it. Currently, your ordinance has a maximum road length of 2,000 feet. We're asking for the ability to extend that to 2,900 feet to allow us to possibly in the future develop the rear portion of the property. And then the density that we're asking for is 61. And the plans that I showed you are 48 to 52, which is what we envisioned to build in the first phase. So we would like the provision to add a few more in the future in the rear of the property. And in that event, you know, certainly we would be subject to the, all of the requirements of planning board review, et cetera. But we would like to have that accomplished in this phase of the amendment. In terms of benefits to the public, I remember, I, I mentioned the increased setbacks, preservation of the views along Spurwink Road, providing a unique innovative housing project that currently doesn't exist in Scarborough, the community access to the walking trails, certainly, and certainly during construction, lots of. certainly during construction, lots of construction jobs and revenues to nearby businesses. And then ongoing and perpetuity, a significant tax benefit. This will require very little public services, no school impacts, and will generate hundreds of thousands of dollars annually to the town in terms of revenue. So we would like to thank you for our, our ability to present the project and answer any questions you may have.
Questions will start at the end of work downs, Counsel Rowan, and then Counsel Foley.
Yep. So first question, and then I'll yield. The, so when you mentioned 16 cottages, the idea would be that the land that's reserved for future development, that's where you're thinking you might put eight additional?
Yeah, let me go backwards. So that would be if it occurred, and we have no firm plan for it. If it occurred, it would most likely occur in this quadrant.
I kind of follow up a couple more.
Yes.
Misspoke when I said I was going to yield right away.
All right.
So what would happen to the, to the trails were you to develop that? Or would it be in the contract that you maintain access and community trails as well?
Yes. If you, if you notice that the, most of the trails occur on the perimeter of the project. And so if, if the additional units were developed, they would, they would be in the center portion of the site. The trails would remain on the periphery as well as the connection to the trail.
Gotcha. I thought I saw one trail that went right through the middle.
There might be one or two segments that would need to be disturbed, but generally as a whole, they would be retained.
And then how many, how many bedrooms do each of the different building types have? Just out of curiosity, have you gotten that far?
They vary. It's... Yeah. This is Jim.
I know a little bit more about some of the details. Can I just clarify a point that was made? When we originally presented to you earlier this evening, I think it was said 16 cottage homes, the number is actually eight. So I just wanted to clarify that the number that we would seek to get permitted would be eight cottage homes. So just to clarify that. By and large, these apartments are going to be two-bedroom. There will be some that will be two-bedroom den. There may be one or two of the cottage homes that'll be slightly larger. But generally speaking, two-bedroom, two-bath would be the, sort of the typical model in terms of number of bedrooms. We do think there may be a modest number of apartments in the hybrid building that may be like a one-bedroom den style. Generally, we see the marketplace seeking more square footage rather than less. And that is really reflective of the design that, that we are sharing with you this evening.
Thank you.
May I also just add another piece about community? If I may add another piece about community benefit, I, I would like to note that in the proposed contract zoning amendment document, the trails are specifically addressed, that they would be maintained, that it would be accessible to the public at large. That is the case with the existing trails on, on the Piper Shores property. So we would like to extend that opportunity as part of this development. The other point that I would like to make with regard to community benefit is that in the contract zone amendment that has been drafted, there is the affordable housing benefit that we would provide as part of this development to support affordable housing in the greater Scarborough, Scarborough community. So that is likewise an important part.
Could you elaborate, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah. We have been talking to leadership with the town, and I think we have identified, and I can, can actually reference the document itself, but I believe it's a $2,000 per unit benefit.
It's two. We have a lot to talk about.
Times 50.
Twenty. I'm sorry, 20. It's...
Right.
But it's based on the...
It's based upon 10 units. So it's a $20,000 allocation for every 10 units. So, and then it is brought down to a factor of, I think it's $2,000 per unit. So that's the easier...
Way to look at it.
Yes.
Be $100,000 to answer Counsel Rowan's question.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Counsel Foley?
So in the back section, when we were talking about future development, if, if and when it were to be developed, it would be another cottage style. There wouldn't be any other type of building that you'd consider in that area?
That's correct. We would anticipate that if that area were ever developed, and I will tell you because of the prevalence of wetlands, I don't think it's a strong likelihood, but it would certainly not be more than a, than a single-story cottage-style home.
Okay. And then my second question is more related to the trails and the parking. One of the things I didn't realize, this is just a first kind of pass at this, I'd be, it would be important to me to know or have a commitment to the number of parking spots. If the drawing was accurate, there's only seven spots there for, so I don't know if that's what you intend or not. And then just one other point of clarification, it was very specific in saying walking trails. And my understanding is that that entire trail system that goes kind of to some other neighborhoods both, in both directions, is used by a multi, multitude of uses.
Yes.
There are mountain bikers, there are, and so is it specifically just walking, or would people be able to access to, to mountain bike there as well?
We've identified it in general terms as walking trails, but the trails in their current condition are cut at about a width of six feet. So they would be available for walking, for cross-country skiing, for snow shoeing, et cetera.
That's, I wanted to hear the non-restriction.
And it would be our intent to maintain the width at, that six-foot level or width for those various purposes.
Thank you.
Can you pick up on whether you've been in touch with the Scarborough Land Trust or Camp Ketchum?
Yes. We referenced earlier in a presentation that we had reached out to the abutters of the property. We invited all of the abutters, including executive leadership of the land trust and of Camp Ketchum. Both were present at our abutters meeting on the 12th of June. We actually held the event at Camp Ketchum, so that will reflect some degree of their support for this initiative. And we believe that likewise there is support from the land trust. We believe that by offering this development and the use of the trails to the public at large, it will enhance access to both the Camp Ketchum property as well as the land trust property that is to the rear of Camp Ketchum. So we really see it as opening up more than 100 acres of access to the public at large through the trail development system.
Counsel Kiezum.
Yes. I have quite a few questions, so I'm happy to defer if others have few. I have five questions, so if there are others that have few, I'm, I'm happy to go last.
Counsel Gergen.
I, again, I talked with my counselors about this before, but just for the general public for notification, my cousin, James Bennett, is the treasurer of the board of directors of Piper Shores. So I just wanted to make that relationship known. I have absolutely no fiduciary interest, or I'm not getting any money, or have any undue influence, but I just want to make that clear. And then I just had one thing that popped in my little head, because I do a lot of work with seniors in my own business, and I'm one myself. It'd be interesting to see if folks think about even doing some sort of disabled access to some of these trails, particularly where you have people with limiting conditions, physical conditions, or eyesight conditions, or whatever, in your own facility. It would just be kind of a fun thing to think about, too. Something I'm going to throw out there.
Counsel Kiezum.
So thanks for showing up. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
First question I have is, do you know the age of the structure of Five Dorado?
It's approximately 19 years old.
Okay, so it's a relatively newer facility.
Relatively new, yes.
There is no historical significance to that property?
There is not.
Okay. I'm curious to know if you've considered the traffic across Spurwink between the two facilities and how you expect to mitigate that?
Yes. We will be providing a Piper Shore-sponsored transportation back and forth between the two communities to try to impart, limit the amount of automobile traffic back and forth. We expect that this community will support approximately 80 residents. Some will use the pipe, the existing Piper Shores community, others will frankly not based upon my experience in working with communities that have separate addresses. I do not anticipate any significant increase in traffic. We would certainly be willing to do some further evaluation to the satisfaction of both the planning board and town council with regard to traffic. I would point out that right now there are about 360 residents on the existing Piper Shores campus. With the addition of 80 residents to this community, this will not be a staff-intensive community. In other words, there will be no health services, there will be no 24-hour, around-the-clock staffing that will be provided on this campus. Therefore, there will be a de minimis number of staff that are actually accessing the property.
Okay. Wetland mitigation, obviously looking at your development map and the overlay, how do you expect to deal with that mitigation?
As Mr. Conway had indicated, we had had a very good informal session with a DEP officer. In the original plan that was presented, it looked as though we were slightly above one acre of impact on wetlands. We went back and revised the plan. We actually reduced the number of single-family cottages from 11 to eight in order to preserve more of the existing wetlands. We believe we're somewhere in the area of impacting between .7 and .8 acres through this development process. If there are opportunities to mitigate even further, we would like to do that for obvious reasons, environmental reasons, excuse me, as well as cost reasons. So we have worked very hard in terms of the placement of the housing accommodations to try to mitigate any impact.
Affordable housing, I noticed you mentioned, you referenced our kind of standard.
Yes.
How, how much of an impact is that on this project moving forward?
The impact really would be a payment in lieu of actually developing that housing on this property, in large part because the Piper Shores model is housing that is developed for seniors as part of a life care program. Now, what happens is the life care program includes an entrance fee and a monthly fee, and then the organization supports the healthcare costs of that resident over the course of his or her lifetime. So there is an insurance component to the pricing of these homes. Therefore, they would not be able to be priced at an affordable housing level and have us offer the commensurate amount of benefit that a life care model suggests. Therefore, that's why we would prefer to be able to make a payment in lieu of actually developing that housing on the site.
I guess I would, I would put my, my two cents in. I think that's, that's an approach we've taken in the past. I think the value of that offset is something that needs to be determined, not just on a per-unit basis, but I think the valuation and the value of the property, the amount of property that we would be losing for potential development should be part of that consideration as well. So, so I guess the last question I have is, why do you want to extend the contract zone? Why not go for an existing zoning structure that's out there that will meet your needs?
As we consider the existing contract zone and the prospect of developing a new contract zone, we're essentially providing the same kinds of services. We're literally right across the street from our existing 138-acre campus. The requirements that are part of the contract zone, we imagine would be generally consistent with the existing agreement and just felt that it would be a more streamlined process in order to extend by way of an amendment the existing contract zone.
So if I could follow, so if a contract zone is not available and you need that zoning to be more standard or some standard zone that we have that would accommodate your facility, would that impact your, your desire to move forward?
We would not move forward if we had to pursue the two-acre minimum lots that this pro, that this property currently is zoned for. The project is simply not feasible at that level.
Are there other contracts? Are there other zones available to you aside from a contract zone that would give you the density requirements that you're looking for?
I'm not aware of any, but I would defer to others who are more attuned to the contract zone and the zoning designations. So I don't know the answer to that today. Perhaps, Will, you can address.
The answer is yes, kind of looking at the planning director who maybe can weigh in on this. But I think the issue with that is this is in a, a large area of the town that's zoned RF. And to look for zoning for this property that's different than that is probably, may not be looked upon favorably. But Jay, maybe you could weigh in.
Certainly, if you, if you wish to. Mr. Chase.
Have to try to answer questions as I can, but I think Mr. Conway did a pretty good job in answering. I, I frankly haven't looked to see what of our zoning, existing zones might allow this density. I'm fairly confident that we have zones that would allow 68 units on, how many acres are we talking?
Forty-five.
Forty-five acres. We certainly have zones that would allow that type of density. But I think Mr. Conway is right. The reason we have contract zoning is ostensibly to enable projects that don't sort of fit the general character of the neighborhood, provided the applicant can sort of meet the council's threshold. Otherwise, we'd really be looking at creating what's called the spot zone, doing spot zoning, where this whole area is really RF zoning. The closest, next closest zoning is the Higgins Beach zoning, which is, isn't all that far, but it's certainly a very different context. So I don't know if that, you know, interested your question specifically, but I would say, I guess what I'd say in summary, certainly we have zones that could allow this type of density. I think contract zone is written into our ordinance for this type of development, and it probably is the best approach.
The reason, I guess, well, I'll clarify, the reason for my question is, I, I really don't like contract zones. Every time there's an amendment or a change, it has to come before the council, and it's a little cumbersome. If there's something there that, that fits, that works through the regular process, I don't know if that, if that's something that, that the project won't allow, so be it. But I, contract zones to me are something I'd like to be moving away from rather than moving towards, and we seem to be expanding them on a regular basis. So that's my, my two cents.
Other questions? Counsel Rowan?
This might be more of a question for Jay, but do we have the infrastructure down there to support this kind of density? I mean, it's, it's RF zone. I mean, do we have sewer, water?
Public sewer and public water.
I know you said it was for me, but I might actually defer to their engineers probably look at this more closely than I have, but sewer and water does run down Spurwink and connect to the existing facilities.
I don't. We've, we've looked at it, and there is adequate capacity.
Thank you.
Jim, I, I noticed there's a request for an extended roadway. Do you have an intention to sprinkler the, the buildings or provide protections against a longer dead-end street?
Yes, the, the project would include fully sprinkled structures. The existing Piper Shores community, all of the structures are fully sprinkled.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Will, ask the public, anyone wishing to address this matter, please present yourself at the podium, state your name and address. Accept the motion.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. This is a first reading discussion. Counsel Rowan?
Yeah, so I think for a first read, I'm, I'm happy to have it move, move forward. I think I'd like to echo, pick up on something Counsel Kiezum said regarding the in Luffy. I think that, that it may not be enough in general to, to say that one affordable unit, you can buy your way out of one affordable unit for $20,000. I think the build-out cost... I think the build-out cost is significantly higher. And I think I'd also like to advocate that in a contract zone, we don't have to allow an Enlufi. I'd like to at least have us talk about having, requiring the build-out. I understand that their business model is different, but perhaps they don't have the same level of, the same level of insurance or lifetime care commitment from that perspective. But I do think that from a community benefit standard, I don't know that a hundred thousand dollars is sufficient for affordable housing. You know, there's such a dearth of affordable senior housing in the state, in the area, in town, that I'd really like to have that explored during further discussion. But for today, I'm happy with it.
Thank you. Counsel Rowan.
Yeah, I'm, first read, I'm happy to see it go forward, but I agree with everything that Counsel Rowan just said, and then also just a little concerned about if the intent is only seven parking spots for, that's not a lot of public access in a town as large as we are. And I could imagine it being quite popular to be able to go and access the trails at this. I'd like to see a little more parking there than that. So that would be something I would ask them to consider.
Thank you. Counsel Katerina.
Yeah, I would vote to move this forward also, subject to, you know, further review. It will go to planning board and whatever. But I agree, to me, affordable housing is a huge issue here in town, and I would like to see us have more discussions with that as part of the community good, because like Counsel Kiyazo, I don't like contract zone for many reasons. So I want to make sure that we are addressing that, and if you want to call it a quid pro quo, there it is. But yeah, I'd like to have some more discussions around that.
Thank you. Counsel Hayes.
No, I will support it going forward on first read. I kind of echo all the comments that have been shared and agree with them. Further conversations will be important.
Thank you. Counsel Kiyazo.
So I think I've expressed my concerns, but I'd like that to be related to the planning board. I'd like to see them look at the traffic. I'd like to see them look at wetland mitigation, because I'm not convinced that that's adequate looking at the plans and looking at the amount of development for what's there. And the affordable housing piece is obviously key to me. We'll move it forward for first reading, but I'd like to see a lot more detail and certainly feedback from the planning board on those issues as well.
Thank you. I attended the public hearing for the neighborhood, and the meeting went well. Most of the people from the neighborhood were from the Acorn Street area, and some of whom I know. And so I was encouraged that the two subdivisions that run astride this proposed development seem to be on board with it. I think that's very important, because we are placing a higher density than the current zoning allows. See no further discussion? All in favor? opposed? Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and answering all our questions. Order eighteen dash forty-six, act on the request to certify the result of the school budget validation that was held on Tuesday, June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Ask the town manager to introduce this matter.
Yes, this is a customary matter for the council to certify the election results. There were a number of, I suppose, questions or inquiries that I received, I actually met with a group of residents regarding their experiences, or at least some things they heard about the election. And I would like to just take a moment, hopefully for the benefit of the council, but also the public as well, just to provide a couple of comments in that regard. Just to put things in context, with regard to the school validation vote, we've been doing this since two thousand and eight, and this past June twelfth was the fourth time during that period that we've had a vote margin within a hundred votes, just using that as a benchmark. People seem to think that that margin was close enough that we should perhaps consider doing a recount. In two of those cases, it was defeated, and in two cases, the budget actually passed by that narrow margin. One was as close as ten votes. And I would just point out that in none of those cases was a recount ever considered, to my knowledge. I wasn't here for the first one in two thousand and eight, and certainly they were never undertaken. If we thought at all that there were any irregularities with the process and the results, we would certainly be the ones to initiate any process required to get to the bottom of that. And I think our past examples really are the best example of that. We've had a number of very noteworthy cases where we've had some questionable results, and each and every time, we have, I think, done the right thing. I know we've done the right thing by taking the time to state our mistakes, to take our time to clarify and to correct those results. And we would certainly be inclined to do that here again. The two things in specific that I've heard that I'd like to address are that voters were, received multiple ballots. This year, there was a single local ballot that contained the school budget referendum question only. Voters should have received only one of those, and then there were two state ballots this year. We were aware on at least two occasions that did occur. We do have election workers. I would characterize it as human error. In the two occasions we're aware of, those voters returned those extra ballots, as they should. I suppose, in the event it could have happened again that we're not aware of, I guess there's two points I would note. The voter would have filled out that ballot incorrectly and potentially committed election fraud. But more importantly, we do have election monitors at each of the machines, and I think it would have been certainly highly irregular, and I expect would have been caught by the monitor if there was a voter looking to feed in more than one ballot in that machine that was dedicated to school. So from my estimation and that of the election folks as well, that would certainly be highly unlikely for that to occur. And in the event of recount, frankly, that ballot would have been counted again, so we really would not have gotten to the bottom of any of that. And the other piece, which was an occurrence that I've heard was fairly common statewide, these voting machines can be fickle at times. They're optical scanning devices. In our instance, we did have a point midday on election day where one of the devices dedicated to the school ballots did have some reading issues. And what happens in that instance, it simply won't receive the ballot. You could try and drive. And the election workers kind of worked on that to clean some debris or dust away, and during that period, they wanted to make sure that things flowed. And so on the front of each of the election machines, there is a slot for the voter to simply deposit their ballot, and it's then called an auxiliary ballot. And in fact, there were a hundred and fifty auxiliary ballots at the end of election day. And I know for a fact they were counted, because I left here with one vote total, and I got halfway home and Tony called to say, let me correct that, you know, we need to include these additional one fifty auxiliary ballots. So we know for certain that they were counted that evening. And so I just want to really give voters the assurance that we have safeguards in place, we follow them, and we have certainly no reason to believe that there's a need for recount. And I hope members of council agree with that assessment. There was nothing irregular or unexpected, and the election staff and I have full faith and confidence in the results, and hope you do too.
Thank you. Public comment on the order. See none? Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Rowan.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? The number of ranked choice voting ballots returned versus the number of school budget ballots returned, were they fairly close? I mean, that would be kind of the benchmark I would see, where as an independent voter, you would get one of each, and everybody would get one of each.
Well, if you're an independent, if you're unenrolled, you'd only get two. You'd get the state referendum and the school budget referendum. In order to get the primary, you'd have to register in a party.
Do you happen to know the number returned?
So the referendum for receive, they returned back five thousand nine hundred and twenty, and ours was five thousand nine hundred and fifteen. Some people didn't return ballots. And actually, the combination between the Dems and the Republicans was four thousand six hundred and eight. So we had more people vote on the two referendum questions than we did with the primary.
Thank you.
Chris.
So I had the fortunate or unfortunate privilege to be at the polls the entire day, and I thoroughly acknowledge that there was some frustration amongst some citizens with the amount of time and the delays. I think, to me, that's a positive thing, because that means that we weren't rushing through things and things were thoroughly processed. I will say, you know, I think perhaps some of this concern is the fact that a lot of citizens aren't aware of the checks and balances that exist behind the process. They're open and transparent, but you may not see those when you're at the polling station. So there's multiple ways to confirm or identify errors that happen, and I think to the town clerks' benefit, we have identified those, as Tom has mentioned in the past. So I think we've gone through the same processes, the same checks and balances. I think if there were any irregularities, we would have been identified, they would have been identified, we would have been notified, and we would have taken the best corrective actions forward. So hopefully, that explanation that Tom gave was sufficient to alleviate citizens' concerns about the integrity of the voting process. I do believe that it is very sound and very thorough, and I think there are multiple checks and balances that we go through to confirm that. And if you recall, we actually had an ad hoc council committee last year review that process specifically in light of some of the irregularities that we had identified in the past, not that had gotten through. So I think the results of that review and that process confirmed what we all know, and that it's a very sound process, it's a very thorough process, and it's a very robust process. And as a side note, I would like to congratulate Chairman Donovan, who has the dubious distinction, I guess, of being the only council chair to have every budget pass under his guidance, I think in the history of Scarborough. So congratulations to that.
Thank you.
We're going to do some research on that.
Look it up, look it up.
One of the obvious coincidences of life.
Take the credit where you can.
Counsel Katerina.
Yeah, having formally worked in a number of elections and been the deputy election warden, I would just, I don't want to rehash, but yeah, there were a lot of built-in checks and balances in the system that the average person is not aware of, but rest assured that everything was done, was done correctly. The auditing afterwards and whatever showed that there weren't, nothing out of line. So it's just a very close vote, I mean, and that happens. It's not close enough, though, for a recount. I know that sounds really strange, but the first election I ever ran in, and I lost by like a hundred and fifteen votes, and I thought, oh my God, they should recount. And then I realized, uh-uh. When you have, when you have machine counts, it's going to come out pretty much the same. There's not going to be much difference when you're counting originally by machines. But I did want to thank the election staff, you know, for all the work that they do, because it's not just election day, it's all of the work prior to, processing absentees and whatever. So, you know, thank you for that. And we did meet one of our council goals, in case anyone missed it. I think our primary council goal was to pass the budget on the first vote. So congratulations to everybody on that one.
Counsel Foley.
Yeah, I guess my only comment would be, you know, it's clearly, we can all understand and appreciate, you know, emotions have been running high for quite some time in town, and I think that adds to perhaps the questioning that we're hearing. But I want to just say, on my, you know, personal view, I have absolutely full confidence in Tony and her team, for all the reasons that many of my fellow counselors here have stated. You know, would we, you know, if we didn't hit the parameter that's needed for a recount, and so I support the decision not to do that. I would just encourage all of us to think about, as leaders, though, how do we get to a place where those kinds of questions don't keep coming up? And so that's a personal challenge I'm going to pose to myself and to us as a group, because that actually concerns me more than anything else. That's something that I'd like to, in this next year, see if we can tackle. So, but to anyone out there, I fully support, you know, our process, checks and balances that have been put in place, and I have no doubt that the vote was accurately forecasted.
Thank you. Counsel Rowan.
Can I ask a question? Do we have a threshold at which we would trigger a recount?
No, I'm not aware that there's an automatic threshold. It's typically initiated by the voters and more often than not by a candidate. But there's no threshold that I'm aware of. There is some confusion around that. The law does talk about a 1.5% margin. That is, in the context of whether a deposit is required for a recount, but I'm not aware that there's any automatic threshold.
Sure, thank you.
And I would expect that with a ten-vote differential in one of these and no recall, no recount was required, that that pretty well establishes it. Other discussion on the matter? Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Non-nation items, none? Standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. Chris, let's start down there with you.
I have nothing to report.
Peter?
Yeah, a couple of things. The finance committee did meet on June nineteenth of this week, and there were kind of three things we did discuss. One, we did go over the March thirty-first financial statements, and actually, I included to everybody this morning just sort of the executive summary of that. I did want, there's two pieces of information that we did hear from the finance committee. One is, Tom, maybe you need to correct me if I speak out of turn. I think we did receive some positive news that we are actually tracking a little better than we thought this year, as far as revenues and expenditures go, that we actually may end up in a better place at the end of the year than we had budgeted, which is good news. There were some revenues that were higher than we had forecasted and anticipated, and there's been some pretty good controls on a lot of expense items. There are some expense items like salt, which was a rough year for us. But what I did distribute to you, I thought it was important, maybe just for the other council members and also for the audience. This year, as everybody knows, we did do, we did do a bond for the public safety building, and it was kind of an education for us, the finance committee. When we issue bonds, sometimes you're required to get a bond premium back. You actually pay a slightly higher interest rate, but you get cash back. We actually got about 1.3 million dollars in bond premium back, and we're required that we have to use it, something to do with the debt service. So I just, it's in the last paragraph of what we distributed. We used about ninety thousand of that to pay for the bond issuance itself. We're going to apply 515,000 of it to a bond payment, let's do, interest payment, let's do this fall. Tom, is that correct?
Correct, interest only, but yes.
And then there's about 735,000 that we actually applied to buy down the amount of money we need to borrow for the public safety bill. So those are pretty significant numbers. That's why I distributed this to everybody, so you sort of knew it. Anybody in the audience that has questions, certainly give us a call. So that was the financial statements. The other thing we did, we've been working for over a year, Chris, something like that?
More than that.
We will bring it forth on the next meeting. We've been working on sort of a combined financial and fiscal policy, fiscal policy. I don't know how many pages it was, it turned out to be about thirty-plus pages. We've embedded some metrics in it, we've embedded a lot of things, we're trying to make it simpler. We'll be bringing that forward and kind of with our recommendations for review. And then the third thing we talked about, we didn't get very far, but it's still, we have talked about it as, I think, the last three finance committees, really trying to get to a place where we can start thinking about financial modeling again. In particular, we thought it was really important, as we start thinking about debt service, one of our goals is how can we keep our debt payments level? And we know that we were approaching some major projects down the highway. There's the community center we've talked about, there's the library expansion, there's maybe a likelihood we're going to have to do something around some of the schools and primary schools. So we really want to start thinking about if we can do some financial modeling, so we can start looking a little bit ahead. And town staff agreed that they would at least bring back And town staff agreed that they would at least bring back something to us to start that conversation. And Tom, if I put words in your mouth, let me know. But I think in the past, because of, you know, the funding for schools, being volatile and other things, but I think you echoed saying, we think we're in a more stable place from a revenue point of view, being able to project.
Yeah, I think some of those uncertain variables are, we're through that phase. So I think we're in a better place to be able to project forward, looking forward.
And I know some of our constituents have been asking for some of that financial modeling. So those are sort of the three things that we had discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. Then quickly to report back on the Coastal Harbor and Shellfish, they're back up and running, they have a full slate of officers. They do have some things in front of them, just for Counselor Caterina, the Coastal will take up the moorings issue that we talked about.
Good, right. Thank you.
I'm not sure they're happy about that.
Oh, yeah.
It is on their docket.
All right.
And I just want to report out for the Shellfish Commission, they're still having conversations about surveys, so they can get to a point where they have some criteria for licensing, which is what we've asked for for the last year. The other thing I wanted to share is, on the surveys, there was a lot of question about how to do that. The University of New England has a student that's been coming to every meeting. He's actually going to conduct several different types of surveys on the class and try to see what works. So we're actually getting some science we can apply to what we're doing, so I thought those are all positive things. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Counselor Caterina.
Yeah, last week, Communications met, worked on our action plan and adopted it, and I will be, I will present it probably the next beginning of July, I'll bring something forward. And we went over, you know, the things that have been talked about last year, I guess was the first year of the Communications Committee, and we have managed to hit a few of the goals, like the budget forms, it was felt that those are very helpful and we should continue those, Facebook email, Larissa's doing a great job with those things. The Memorial Day Parade, we got a lot of very positive feedback for participating in that. So, you know, we'd like to see that continue as an annual event for folks who are able to do that, because it's not just the parade, it's also the memorial service that's at Veterans Home. And people were very impressed that the Town Council actually showed up. And the council table at elections is also very popular. I was, things were just disappearing off the table, and I had great questions and lots of folks chatting with me. So that was that. Tomorrow at 4:30 is the ordinance, and we're going to be talking about two hot topics. One is signs. We're going to discuss, you know, what's happened in the past year, is there anything more we need to do, whatever, more general discussion. And also marijuana, since the state passed the marijuana provisions, we're going to talk about, you know, what, if anything, we want to do as a town. So that's tomorrow at 4:30, if anyone's interested, here at Town Hall.
Thank you. Counselor Foley.
Counselor Caterina covered. Communications Conservation Commission also met, and I will be calling each of you individually to kind of chat with you about plastic bags and your kind of thoughts on whether that's something we should pursue or not here in Scarborough, and give that feedback to the, back to the Commission next month. And they also, they conducted some exit polling as well at the election. I haven't seen the results of that yet, but they're really trying to just gauge whether or not, you know, townsfolk have some appetite for developing some kind of a climate action plan. So that's work that continues there. And that is it for me.
Great. Counselor Rowan.
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Let's see, Metro Regional Coalition met last week. Tom and I attended. We met with some Boston area officials, the mayor of Somerville, been the mayor for the last 15 years, young man, must have been made mayor at his youth, because he's obviously still a young man, but very capable, and he is the chair of the Mayor's Coalition, which is the 15 communities that make up the greater, inner Greater Boston area. And we talked about their experiences on housing, affordable housing. They strain to a much greater degree than we do on those issues. They need tens of thousands, I think of.
400,000 units of housing.
Of new housing to meet the demand, the areas of the Greater Boston area growth. And they candidly admitted that there's a NIMBYism problem. So we continue to look at the homelessness issue, and we, as a council, I hope, will keep an open mind as the Metro Regional Coalition uses this summer to try to develop a clearer plan as to what to propose to the seven towns that make up the Metro Regional Coalition. I've been pushing an active participation of the county, because the county is made up of all of Cumberland Counties, Jim Gailey, 26, I think, 26 towns, and it broadens the participation of, if we're trying to devise strategies that would address homelessness, every town contributes to some degree or another. And they all end up in Portland, in this, in our area, for the most part, and a third of them come from out of state, so they're not Portlanders. And a third of them come from the towns that surround. So there is an obligation for all of us to participate, and that, we'll work on that. Obviously, the Housing First program is something that will, I'd ask you to come to understand a little bit better, because that probably will be one of the cornerstones that is pushed. I actually would like to get an opportunity for all of us to see one of the Housing First facilities. I saw the Huston Commons off of, blanking on the street in Portland, but it was the best building in the street by a mile. So very welcoming, et cetera. So that is it for committees. Town managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of points of interest. FEMA did file with, in the Federal Register this past week, revised flood map, so here we go again. This will be at least the third time over, I think, a six-year period. So what that really does is it initiates the process. There's a common period that runs 90 days that will expire September 17th, and so we'll keep you updated as we move forward. As regards the public safety building, there's kind of three quick updates. We've received what all characterize as positive news from DEP. They've begun their review and have provided generally very positive comments, but it's still underway. That leaves us with some optimism that that September 1 start date is still within reach. As I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, by the end of this month, we'll have a guaranteed maximum price for the site work, which is a big question mark to us at this point, so... And then by the end of July, we'll actually have a guaranteed maximum price on the entire building. So things are really moving forward quickly at this point. We've also decided to pull out the communications tower as part of a, so it's not part of the overall project, we're bidding it on our own. It's going to require, obviously, coordination with all the other consultants. We did have one bid received, and it's well within budget, so we feel good about that. We're going to certainly verify that it's a qualified contractor and that we should be moving forward. With Larissa's assistance, we are moving forward with the sale of five formerly tax-acquired properties. Some of you may recall, I came to this council back, actually, in late 2015, and received authorization to move forward. We started that and then stopped it, but this time we are moving forward. I mention that because it's really kind of irregular for us to be selling property. We're going through our conventional process, but we're also trying to reach out to local brokers to make them aware, and any sales, obviously, are approved by council, and we reserve the right to reject or accept any of them. So we'll have some more information perhaps as soon as your next meeting. We had previously scheduled a workshop on the Pine Point Co-op, and I mentioned that in passing, there's still an interested, certainly the current owners are interested in selling, so that much is true. It remains to be seen whether there's, the person that we've been chatting with will ultimately be the purchaser, but I think it's fair to say that someone will be in front of us. And I mention that because probably unbeknownst to all counselors and most of the public, the town has ongoing interest in that property. We have a number of deed restrictions that, not the least of which requires consent of any sale, but there's some other particulars as well. So that's an issue that I think I could predict will be in front of council sometime in the, probably sooner than later, and we'll certainly update you. With respect to the revale, the commercial industrial revale is within a week of being completed for fieldwork. At the same time, we are completing the vision conversion, and what's important about that is that all that new data from the fieldwork will be put into the new system, and that's what will produce the new values. So as I get more information, I'll certainly share that with you, but we're right on schedule, certainly, to make that conversion in time for the commitment. And then on the residential revale, in anticipation of the approval of the budget, actually, the passage of the town budget, we did get out and issue an RFP. We have two very qualified bids, the ones we expected and hoped for. The real good news is, one of them was $75,000 lower than our budget estimate, so barring anything shocking to us, I think we'll be coming in very good shape. We'll be doing interviews with both firms on June 26th, so we're anxious to get that underway. We've been told that either firm will really need the full 12 months to be able to do this. So the sooner we get this awarded and them started, I think, the better for all of us. And lastly, the Summer Concert Series starts next Thursday, the 20, excuse me, a week from Thursday, the 28th, and will continue every Thursday thereafter until August 2. And so that's a free, family-friendly event here in Memorial Park, again, every Thursday evening at 6:30 in the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add to Tom Andrews' comments, the public safety building roadway had been a bit of an issue, and every effort has been made now to move it as far away from Memorial Park, including away from the sidewalk that goes around the perimeter, and as close to the car wash as humanly possible. So that is, I thought, a good initiative that has been advanced. Counselor member comments? Counselor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Foley.
I would just remind everybody that school is now out for summer, which means a lot of little ones are riding bikes and playing in places that they wouldn't normally be seen, so be extra careful on the roads.
Thank you.
And have a great summer.
Thank you. Counselor Caterina.
Nothing other than to congratulate the graduates of the class of 2018, whether you went to Scarborough High School or any of the other schools around, good for you, and good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes.
Nothing to see there. Thank you. Have a great summer.
Counselor Hayes. I must feel the chair's thunder, other than to say we were at the groundbreaking this afternoon for Beacon at Gateway, so I'm assuming you're going to reference that in your comments, so I have no comments.
Great. We had a good town turnout for the groundbreaking of the Beacon at Gateway. This is the project that was approved this past year for 288 units of high-quality apartment buildings, right next door to Golf and Ski. We were out there, Tom, myself, Jay Chase, Chris, Karen Martin. We really enjoyed it, had the opportunity to talk with the developers and the staff. The rental occupancy is intended to start this October 1st, so only a few months away from being ready to have their clubhouse and their first building ready for occupancy. It's really moving along rapidly. They plan to finish the project by next summer or fall at the latest, but probably in the summer. To date, they have paid us over $1.1 million in fees, a really incredible amount, of which $583,000 has been put in our affordable housing project. So that's terrific. I really wanted to thank, offer thanks to the school board and the administration for the excellent budget that was approved by the voters. I wanted to thank the Finance Committee and the Town Council for the excellent budget that the municipality submitted, and the town manager was instrumental in submitting that. I was very pleased with the way that was presented. And I want to thank all of those people who voted for the school budget. It faced some difficult headwinds with the recent events that we're all too sadly familiar with, the recall, the slanderous attacks on the superintendent, some of the social media commentary, and again, the sign campaign. I had an interesting experience, a couple of hours ago, I was, every Wednesday, I play in the None Such Men's League. And I played today with a guy named Mike, who I didn't know, who was from Scarborough. And he asked me the question, so, what's the taxes going to look like? And I said, I think it's a good story. I'm guessing about 1%. He said, 1%? You're kidding me? I said, where are all these 5.6% signs out there? And I said, well, what did you think that was saying? He said, I thought that was saying what was obviously being said, that was what the tax rate increase was. And I said, well, there's tiny little print associated with that, and if you've got an abacus, you might be able to find that number. But that was just a Scarborough resident who said, this is, and then he said, and those signs are out there by that tax group, right? He got it, he knew who was putting them out there, he called them out. And I didn't, I was very circumspect in my remarks about it, because I wanted to hear what a citizen of Scarborough had to say about these circumstances. And I'd never met this guy before, although he said we did play two years ago in the same league, but I didn't remember him. But I just, I thought that was, that was important, and kudos to the town of Scarborough for voting for this budget, because it was a heck of a good budget. Lastly, I wouldn't normally comment on national events, it's not our place, but I must say, God help us, if we believe that intentionally hurting children is an acceptable means of enforcing our immigration laws.
Yep.
I'll say.
Or leveraging other goals that some official may want to advance. So I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.
Just a reminder, we are entering summer schedule, so your meeting next month will be July 18.